Consent agenda. 3.1 Addition of items, new business to the agendas.
Sure, hon.
3.2 Minutes of February 4, 2019 Regular Board Meeting. I think I was supposed to read something.
Did you read all the following items?
No, I did not read that. It's on this.
Here you go.
Let me check that, I don't know. It's on this.
Okay.
Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports of items of routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have second vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. 3.1 Addition unknown. 3.2 Minutes of February 4 Regular Board Meeting. Approval of the Finance Report. Approval of the Activity Fund Report. Approval of the Activity Fund fundraisers. And Approval of the Child Nutrition Report.
Okay, we'll start with the Finance Report. All the investments are current and up-to-date. I believe that you have an attachment that has our expenses to date comparison February 18, 2018 to February 2019. Just a couple of things to point out to you there with regard to some of these expenses. And notice that this month to date, we are up in our payroll and part of that expense of the payroll is the pay raise and then our stipend increases. Number 336, Object Code 336 is Medical Service and that is assessments with our special education students. We've had an increase in those assessments, so you can see the increase year-to-date from last February to this February. 420, when we start towards the end of the year, in this time of year, to begin going through all the paperwork, we contract that out through Northwest Shredders and so you'll see a cost increase each year under that particular object code. Number 430, we did some repairs and some maintenance out of the General Fund this month to protect that building fund, so there were some purchase orders from Rose Plumbing, Northwestern Electric, and Greedaw. And there's also some repairs on some transportation that you'll see in purchase orders to approve later on. I might also tell you that looking at our chargeables and our comparison year-to-date, we are up in all of our chargeable categories. We did notice a decrease this month in our gross production tax. It was about $80,000 less than last month, so I think we're just now beginning to see the price, you know, when the price of oil was low back in October, November, and it stayed around that $55 mark, we're beginning to see that decrease at this time. Are there any questions about the Finance Report? Okay, if we look at Activity Funds, you can see on the month of February, there are some receipts that we have received. Baseball has a $5,000 receipt and that's for some of the fundraisers and the banners, FFA continues to have some receipts from their Blue and Gold Sausage and then purchasing FFA jackets. 921 Vocal, that is some deposits for their senior, or excuse me, for their Electric Gold Trip. And then you see Middle School had a large deposit down there, $19,000. That is their cookie dough that they collected and deposited this past month. There's still a few of those that are outstanding, but they are continuing to collect and turn in that money. I might add that Mrs. Durkey is continuing to work on our fundraisers. There are 26 of those that you approved at the beginning of the year that we are not actually going to be doing this spring and have not done this month. We talked about budgeting and working on reducing the amount of fundraisers and one of the things, talking with Mr. Carroll and the auditors, we are unable to pay for hotels and meals for any state competitions, regional competitions, local competition of students. So as we begin to work on those budgets for next year and in some way trying to reduce those, that's been a little bit of a roadblock to that, so, but we are continuing to look at that and as we get more in, as we continue to refine that budget, we'll be able to present that to you hopefully in the next few months. Any questions about Activity Fund Report? Okay, Activity Fundraisers. We have one fundraiser and this is for the cheerleaders to have a car wash and this is actually for this summer, so this is going to be for their camp that they're going to this summer. And I would recommend that we approve that in just a minute. We've done a really good job of turning these in. I don't, we didn't think far enough ahead from, from last summer to this next summer, so that is what this fundraiser pertains to. Child Nutrition Report. You can see in our Child Nutrition Report that when you compare August to January 2018, 2019, we are serving more lunches and more breakfasts to more students, so that is a good thing. Continue to thank Mrs. Atkins for, for her work and she does a great job. I usually have a lot of questions for her and she does a great job answering those questions for me. Are there any questions on the Activity Fundraiser Child Nutrition Report? If there are none, I would recommend that we approve the Consent Agenda.
I had one comment on the Minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
It was just me being technical.
Okay.
It says that Shane was absent, but then on the next page, he seconds a motion. Should we have some?
Because he came in.
I came in late.
He came in late.
But should we put that in the Minutes that he did?
It should reflect that.
Attendance Update Taken at 508.
Should show him.
You see that when you click on there? Okay. You'll look.
Oh, I see. I see. Sorry.
It's okay.
Good catch, though.
Well, not really.
Well, no, it needs to be right, so thank you for that.
I tried to read this.
I tried to read it. You're just a... I got it.
So, we approved the Consent Agenda. Those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.6.
A second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
McDermott. Aye. Four, Vote to Approve Purchase Order Incumbrances for the Following Funds for Fiscal Year 19. 4.1 General Fund as referenced. 4.2 Building Fund as referenced. 4.3 Child Nutrition Fund as referenced. And 4.4 Gift Fund as referenced.
Okay, if we begin with 4.1, the General Fund, just a couple of larger purchases that we have this month. Purchase order number 584 for $1,700. And you'll see this, you'll see these on a couple of these funds. There's required amount that our libraries spend each year. I believe it's $9 per student, so that's part of these, part of what these expenditures are and these purchase orders are. So 584 is permabound books and that's for Washington's Library. 586, Fallett, that's another book company. $1,600, that's for Alva High School Library. 592, Embassy Suites, that's our reservation for Summer Conference for Administrators. Purchase order number 602 for $2,000. That is some multiple repairs that were done by Rose Plumbing. We had some leaks in the gym after some snowfall in the indoor facility. They worked on a water fountain, sink in the concession stand, some bathrooms, hooked up the whirlpool in the training room in the indoor facility. Number 613 is RT Diesel Repair for $5,000. That was to get our activity buses back in line. We have diesel line that was ruptured, defrost motor that went down a few weeks ago, had to put a new starter in one of the buses, one of the activity buses, so, but we now have all those up and running. Purchase order number 615 for $6,500, that is some special education testing that we are conducting right now. If you look at the General Fund payroll, those are all substitute pay for our substitute teachers. 4.2 Building Fund, that is with Furman Construction. And you've seen this purchase order before, we had to go back and encumber some more money for this. This was the repair down at the bus barn when we had a water line break that went to the restroom, so that is what this Furman Construction, they repaired some concrete down there in front of the bus barn. Nothing in Child Nutrition this month. 4.3, then 4.4, the Gift Fund. We had a student that transferred from another state university to Northwestern and this is for the Share Trust Scholarship. Are there any questions?
Motion, we approve the...
A second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Sub Tenants Report. 5.1 Resignations, Retirements, and Reasignments.
Yeah, we had three resignations this month. Carolyn Cole, Lincoln Elementary Fourth Grade Teacher, Bruce Dollar, High School History Teacher, and Lydia Scalise, Longfellow Third Grade Teacher. Those three will be resigning. We appreciate everything they've done for our public schools and wish them well in their new endeavors. Communications, 5.2. Just wanted to remind you all that strategic planning, our last strategic planning meeting will be next week. Is, we're kind of getting to the stage now where we'll be closer to presenting it to the board in May, so May, or excuse me, March 14th, we will be meeting out of the Career Tech and look forward to that opportunity to work with our community again. It's been a really positive process. Encourage people to get online on our website and read about what's going on and what, what the community says about our schools. Want to talk a little bit about the report cards. Each principal is going to kind of visit just for a few minutes about our state report cards. As you know, it's, it's been in the news over the past, I guess, week, it's when it was approved last Thursday by the State Board of Education, the new state report card. And I can tell you that in preparing for this, there are 19 pages of frequently asked questions and so it's a daunting report card to understand, but I think that's a positive because our state has worked really hard to try to be fair, as fair as they can be. So there are many things, many details that as administrators, we're still looking at and learning about it, but again, I think that's a good thing because I feel like that when this was developed, we are on the right track in being able to really evaluate our schools and, and see how they're doing. So if you look at the first slide, I'm just going to briefly kind of touch on the components of the report card. There are, depending on what school you're in, there are six different components. You have academic achievement and so each spring our students take a, a state assessment and that is part of that report card, how they score on that test and the academic achievement. The next component of the report card is academic growth and this is the component that I think is, is really good for our students and our teachers. It measures the actual, how a student does from year to year and, and not only do you have to exceed a benchmark level, but you can move within a level, within a performance level. And so I believe that's much better for our teachers and students, a more realistic picture of performance. Chronic absenteeism, each school is measured on the percentage of students that are at school. More than 10% in absences and you don't receive any points for a student. Graduation rate, students that graduate on time. Post-secondary, percentage of juniors and seniors who took at least one post-secondary opportunity. There's a big push to, to offer more opportunities for our students and, and we look forward to continue to expand those post-secondary opportunities for our young people. And then finally, ELPA, English Language Progress Assessment, so this is percentage of students who met their WEDA target score. And Ms. Lovelace is going to tackle this one and this is a real difficult one and we've talked to you before about ELL and the importance of helping our students. It's not just conversational English, it's, it's helping them understand the information in their classroom. So, academic achievement.
Academic achievement, Light from Star says it measures the student's academic performance and it measures it in the following areas on the Oklahoma's School Testing Program. ELAs were 15 points, math 15 and science 5. Were total 35 points. However, science is only in our fifth and eighth grades, so if it's a site that does not have science, it will be 30 points. This is measured in the April OSTP assessments, which we are all preparing for and getting ready to take here soon. We have to test at least 95% of our students to get credit and so attendance on test days is comparative. There is a window, our schools all tend to take, we schedule the test at the top of the window, so if a student is absent, we can catch them at the, at the back end of the window, so therefore we can test all of our students. All students are required to take the regular assessment, even if they have an IEP. It has to be pretty severe and profound for them to not qualify for that and that, there's five criteria that they have to meet, all of them for the OAP, which is the Oklahoma Alternative Assessment Program. However, the majority of our students, even on IEP, will be required to take the OSTP. And every student is assigned to target in this process.
I'm going to discuss academic growth. The biggest part of this to me is that the terminology has changed a little bit from the past, so what we used to know as unsatisfactory is now known as below basic. Once, what we once knew as limited knowledge is now basic, so parents really need to understand that when they're looking at test scores too. And then proficient and advanced, that terminology is still the same, but as you can see here that they can move from level to level each year as they take the test. You get credit for moving within a level and you get credit for moving between levels or moving above. I guess, we can go to the next one, but it's very similar to our math test where we focus on growth. So really the goal is that they grow each time they take the test. That is our, that's our hope. This is just an example of three students that might take the test and what kind of points we get on our report card for their growth. So the orange is a student that moved from below basic high, they moved up to basic low and they received a value of 130. Example one. Example two is the blue and that would be a student scoring at proficient low and they moved down to basic high and they received a score or a value of 80 for a report card. And then the last example is a student that scored advanced low and they stayed in advanced low. Their value is 115. The reason that is higher is because they were in a more advanced difficulty level because they scored in advance. Do you guys have any questions about growth? Okay.
So one of the things we get when we, when we were able to get online and look at these reports, they gave us every student in Alva High School that had a post-secondary opportunity. So what I put up here, these are the courses that we offer our students at Alva High School to achieve that one point for that post-secondary opportunity. And so you can see College Algebra, Electrical Trades, Digital Design and Publishing, Nursing, AP English, and so on and so forth. So these are some of those opportunities that students are able to get at Alva High School.
We talk about graduation rate and the high school really is the only one of the report cards that has this information on there and what is, what happens, I'm going to explain it to you without all the educational lingo, mumbo jumbo. As eighth graders, they come to us and they, they establish a cohort, a group of kids that come to us as eighth graders. We get a, they, they track those kids as they come through and we get a grade based on the number of those students that graduate from Alva High School. What happens is when that, when a student moves off and goes to a different place and they separate from us for one reason or another, then we have, we still have to track that student wherever they go to see what, once they're established in that cohort, we, we actually on our report card this year, got an F in this graduation cohort rate because we didn't do a really good job of tracking those kids once they left. We came back and started looking at that and we realized our grade was low on that and we went back and looked and we had the data from several of the kids that we got deemed for and we never did get it entered in the computer because we didn't feel like that was, you know, that they weren't, they were no longer our student. So we have since gone back, when I called and talked, and once we figured out that was happening, I called and talked to the lady at the State Department and she said, "It's not going to matter now, you can correct it, correct it, keep doing, keep doing what you're doing and correct it, but we won't make that correction on this report card." She did tell me however, that we do have some corrections to make on your report card and it had to do with ACT scores and, and student testing numbers that those students didn't get that, get credit for the ACT score that they took, so they corrected that part on their own. And she said, "We'll correct that graduation data, but it won't show up this, it won't show up on this report card." So our score should go up once because we've done a better job of tracking those kids and I visited with Mrs. Smithy and we are going to make sure that we track those kids that leave us and, and go somewhere else because once they enroll in another district somewhere, they're still our cohort as until they graduate from high school. One of the things that we, we had a couple of kids that came back, they did not graduate with their group, with their cohort, and so they came back and finished the year after that. We get deemed because they didn't graduate with their cohort, but next year, we get to count them and we'll get credit for them if they come back a fifth year. If they're a fifth year graduate, we'll get, instead of getting deemed for that, we'll get credit for getting them back in and do that. We, we feel like, we've talked and we feel like we need to do a better job of our students that separate from us, of giving them some other options rather than, you know, we feel like rather than, because if they, if they say, "We're going to homeschool," in Oklahoma, you can just say, "We're going to homeschool. You don't have to enroll in any other program, you don't have to do anything else, there's no accountability." A parent can just say, "I'm going to homeschool" and we get deemed for that. We're, as a district, are going to offer them some, maybe some online courses to take so we won't get that full total separation. We can still count them through that, try to get them to, to continue working towards a degree until they realize it's important. They, when they get ready to separate from us, they feel like sometimes a degree's not very important or that diploma. And so we feel like if we can keep them in the loop a little while longer, they may not be progressing towards that diploma as fast as they should, but if we can keep them in the loop, then, then maybe by the time we get to their fourth year, fifth year even, that we can at least get them a diploma and work through that. So we've addressed some of the issues on that with, with our report card and what we're going to try to do better with that.
Can I ask a question real quick? When it comes to graduation, so you got deemed, nothing will be seen, will be a year, for the next, so for a year, you have to just suffer through with the F on graduation requirements?
Yep. And then we'll, and that should significantly raise the next year, but it's a different cohort too, so we've got to come back and make sure with that group that we track them and make sure that we, we find out where they went and hit that. Because what happened to them is, we went, we send off a records request or somebody sends us a records request, we didn't go back and enter that data in for that cohort, for that kid, that we knew where he went, we just didn't follow.
Realize that he was responsible for it.
Right. So we'll do a better job with that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question too. How does GED play into that? Do we get credit if they get a GED?
We get deemed, that's a dropout for us. Yeah, that's why we feel like if we can, if we can offer them some edgenuity, some E2020 and keep them, they may not come to our high school, you know, the private schools, the charter schools do a really good job of picking up our kids, that, those marginal kids and we probably as a public school should do a better job of trying to keep those kids in our, in our contact group or in our, in our cohort. We should do a better job than that, but GED hurts us.
These are my slides. And we're just talking about, just to, you know, discuss what we're talking about, which population of student we're talking about, the English learners. And this is the only population that is figured into our report card, which I thought was interesting. This was the only population that was taken out as a different measure or a separate measure to, you know, factor into our report card. So just a little bit about how we get identified English learners, just real quick. Everybody in the district, you have to fill out a home language survey and then from that, we determine whether or not they qualify to take the WEDA screener. And depending upon their score on the WEDA screener, and this all has to be finished by October 1, we have the counts on how many students we serve. This year, our October 1 count was 16,2 and we actually serve five different languages, which is probably a surprise to you. We have five different languages in our, in our school. So after they do that, and so then the students are tested in the screen, just like the slide, the slide said, using the WEDA assessment. And depending upon their growth targets, we then get points depending upon how much they grow. So for instance, we only get four years to get them from their entry to our program to their exit, we only get four years. They have to have a 4.8 on the overall score to be exited from our English learner program. Okay, so if they come to us at a 2.0, the scale is on us, is a 6, our 6.0. We still have four years to get them to a 4.8. If they come to us at a 4.4, we still get four years to get them to a 4.8. So that baseline data doesn't matter as far as you still get four years, okay? To exit the program again, you have to have a 4.8. They have to show a high level of proficiency in reading, speaking, listening, and, reading, speaking, listening, and writing. And this isn't just conversational speech, just like what Mr. Argo was saying, it's that cognitive academic language proficiency. That means that they have to use that cognitive academic language to be proficient at this assessment. So it's, it's a tough assessment for, for English speakers, you know? If, if a kid scores between a 4.5 and a 4.7, a committee could be formed to determine if proficiency is met and that's at an individual basis. But you have to score between a 4.5 and a 4.7 for that committee, for the committee to be convened, okay? And I also wanted to let you know that if you have 10 students that are English learners at a site, that affects the site-specific data as well and not just the district data. So this is, this, this population is a huge population for us to pay attention to and it's just a good thing to do that anyway. And the strategies that we use for English learners are good for all students. And so if you'll go to the next one, I really, I had to consult with Mrs. Leiter, who was our ESL teacher, she's a rock star. I didn't, I was, when I got this slide, I was like, "I don't understand the plus signs." So really what it should be is or, okay? So the plus, I, I felt like this was saying that you have to do this and this and this, right? So I, and that wasn't my understanding, so I had to call Mrs. Leiter today and go, "I don't think there needs to be pluses there, there needs to be ors." Did you create this? Boom. Did you? I figured the state did, because they're a little confusing not to say that. Okay, so anyway, I, I know I said that just a little bit, so.
You know the difference between pluses and ors?
Right.
Now you're saying.
I didn't mean, I didn't really mean that.
Keep going, keep going.
Clearly I did it in front of everybody.
That's all right.
Just saying.
That's all right.
So this is an or, this is an or, so meet their growth target or, you know, like what I said about the committee, if they score a 4.5 to a 4.7, or are proficient first through fourth year, okay? We still have to keep track after that fourth year and so we, yeah, it's, it is quite the tracking. So do you guys have any questions? I know that was a lot.
Do we track every student like that? Do we track every student like that? Or just ones that are in this?
We certainly track these. So, we know which year they're in. We know, yeah, we know when they came to us. We know when their exit date is supposed to be.
Enrollment process, very important. Home language survey when we enroll and really all of these things. The enrollment process is so important that we get correct information and that we, that we are asking for the correct information, that people understand the enrollment process because this is, this is where they're pulling all this. You know, so, so those three days when we do that pre-enrollment are really important.
And Mrs. Leider actually had a table at those three days and so we really got solid data now, I think, and moving forward. So, I feel like, you know, when we do their rounds this year, we can start from that year. Do you guys have any other questions? Okay. I think I've done enough damage.
You'll pull these up. This slide.
Sure you can.
So, Washington's grade was a no grade. The only component, I mean, as far as the overall grade, we got no grade. The only component that Washington is assessed on is chronic absenteeism. And so, this is a percentage of students who were considered not to be chronically absent, meaning that they missed less than 10% of the year. So, that amounts to 18 absences over the course of a year. And so, when we get into the data, which I won't pull up here, there was, you know, maybe 20 kids that had exceeded that 18 absences. And, you know, that's, it's very important for our parents to know, you know, all teachers want to do a good job for their kids and we can't do that if they're not there. So, that would be Washington's grade. So, Longfellow also gets an overall no grade, but did get an A on academic achievement and a B on chronic absenteeism, which to note, as we look at some of the other schools across the state, you know, B has been pretty average in this area. There are some schools that have some abysmal attendance numbers, but so anyway, that'd be Longfellow's.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that include excused absences?
Any absence.
Any.
Any absence. You know.
Not a DCA.
Not a DCA.
Not a DCA.
We have, you know, when I look.
Don't count absenteeism.
Kids on school trips.
School activity. You know, when I looked at the data for Washington, there were some that we knew were maybe even in the hospital or had some extenuating circumstances. I'd say maybe a handful. And then the others maybe are just kind of, just beyond that 18, maybe 18 to 24 absences or something like that.
Is that include parties?
No.
No. Absences the whole day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Go to Lincoln's. Notice that between Washington and Longfellow, you had two components in Longfellow's, one in Washington's. When we get to Lincoln's, we have several. So, Lincoln gets a C overall, chronic absenteeism a B. Our numbers are usually in the low 90 percentile, percentage range, which is, is really good considering the state averages. Academic growth, C. Academic achievement, C. They do not have enough English language proficient learners in that building to, to get a grade on that particular component. You have to have at least 10. So.
I think we'll next year.
Yeah, we were kind of projecting some of those things out. Longfellow won't, Lincoln won't. There's two grades. Get to three grades, you might probably see that component. Middle school, overall C. Once again, they do not have enough English language proficient learners there as well. And one thing to note is, if we're identifying these kids at an early age and they've got four years to exit the program, they're likely to exit the program before they get to this point. So, the kind of English language learners that we would run into would be kids that have moved in from out of district and have never been through that kind of a program. So, you know, we may not have that at that level. Academic achievement, C. Academic growth, D. Chronic absenteeism, a B. Still above the state average in that area. Overall, we got a C.
Can that be, is that broken down for grade at any of those, like sixth, seventh, ninth, any one shape?
When, when we go to the accountability application, which is on the single sign on, we can drill that down to grade levels. We can drill that down a lot of ways. Student populations based on IEP or demographics and those kind of things. So, but what the, what you see here, you won't be able to pull that up because of confidentiality of student names.
And this is 17?
Yes. 17, 18. 17, 18, yes. And then, high school, C in academic achievement, F on graduation, which we know we're remedying that. English language proficient progress. We show 33%, that's a B. 33% success. There were 12 English language learners at the high school, four of which met their growth targets. And then, and that's 2018 data compared to 2017 baseline. We have new data that we'll have by the summer for the 2019 test window and we know that some of those kids are going to end up exiting the program, which is progress. So, chronic absenteeism, B. So, by and large, attendance across the district is pretty solid. Post-secondary opportunities were above the state average with a B. Our overall grade was also a B. So, questions on that one? As you notice, when you get to the high school level, all six components or all five components are figured in. Further left down you go, there's not the data to include all the components. Okay, so where do we go from here? So, as Mrs. Lovelace mentioned, the strategies that we use for ELL learners are good for all learners. And we're talking about reading, speaking, listening and writing, which we've made a concerted effort to push for those kinds of things in the classroom. And we continue to train teachers and as principals and presenting these content area literacy strategies. You know, straight lecture is not that impactful compared to a content area literacy strategy. So, we need to keep doing that because it builds critical thinking skills, which is going to help them on the ACT. Reading is thinking and writing is thinking on paper. We've got to continue to build that. The idea that you do small group discussions along with whole group discussions is also very important because back to the ELL learner, the idea that they're speaking in small groups where they're, it's kind of a safe place to speak is going to be really big for them. So, common assessments like math, common PLCs where they analyze that, that data is also going to be key. We want to continue the process of identifying ELL students. We think Mrs. Leider's done a fabulous job bringing this into compliance. She's done a fabulous job of working with our students and it's been a big, big job for her to reach every kid in the district that is, is ELL. And she's also made an impact with our staff, for them to understand what their role with ELL students is as well. Expanding and encouraging post-secondary opportunities and concurrent enrollment and career tech is going to be key. Those are, those are things that we, we want to make sure we're not holding our kids back and giving them the opportunities to take those classes. And then emphasizing blended learning and virtual education as an alternative to the traditional classroom. So, you know, we have some kids that just maybe don't function very well in a traditional classroom setting. We can't let them just go. We need to give them other pathways to earn that diploma. Alternative school, maybe homebound with your edgenuity program. But those are, those are really important, that we continue to push those kids towards graduation. That will improve our graduation rate and drive that grade card up. So, when we started in the fall of this year, these were some of the things that we thought would be very important. Ms. Lovelace worked with, with me on this, putting this graphic organizer together. These were programs that we thought could move the needle, that we knew could move the needle, that we've tried to spread across the district. And so, this was the plan going into August. And then, I happened to stumble back across this the other day and discuss, "Well, I wonder where we're at." So, the green represent things that are, have been solidly presented and adopted by the staff. PBIS would be one of those. So, improving classroom management, creating a tiered system of behavior support with our district behavior teams. Discussing behavior objectively, meaning that behavior is really communication or trying to communicate something to us when we have misbehavior. And reinforcing good behavior, strategic planning. So, those things have all been very solidly adopted across the district. The orange are things that we've just begun to introduce. The ABCs of discipline, antecedent behavior and consequence. And, and then using our behavior data to shape how we're addressing that, which we've been working with our PBS presenter to do that. Working with teachers to become reflective practitioners. If that strategy didn't work, what we need to do is fix it. We'll throw it out, we'll refine it. And then complex texts, which, teaching kids to read through complex texts and break those down and be able to comprehend them, which is key to the ACT. And then the blue represents things that we have been consistently presenting and we're seeing pockets of adoption. And that would be our content area literacy, which, all those things are sort of tied together. Reading and writing across the curriculum. Reading to, writing to learn and learning to write. Explicit vocabulary instruction. The use of primary source documents in science and history. Reading, writing, talking, listening would be small group discussions and trying to gain a deeper level of learning in those Oklahoma standards. And it's real, that part's been really fun. I get emails and calls from teachers and so I tried this and math worked really good. And, "Why don't you come by and see me, see me try this?" And that's been really neat to see teachers in different buildings attempting these different strategies and refinements. So, we feel like we've made a lot of progress. We, we know that it's going to make an impact. We think, we just have to continue to push all these things. And, and expand into, the parts that are black, we haven't even begun to, to touch those yet. So, much has been done, much is left to be done. Good questions on that?
Might just like an update?
Okay, just, just real quickly and briefly, over 132 proposed education bills. About a week ago, there were over 300. And so, they pared that down. So, there's a lot of information. There's a lot of things going on at the Capitol. There is a lot of proposed changes to school calendar. Some transparency with virtual charter schools and accountability with how they spend their money, tax credits and so on and so forth. And so, we continue to stay on top of those things and communicate with our representatives, Senator Murdock and Representative Newton, and discuss some of these issues and offer to be resources for them. So, just to make you aware of those.
All right, good evening. I am going to speak about student services at Longfellow. And I brought along with me Harper Bay. She's a second grade student and this is Kennedy's class and she's gonna, she's gonna be a lot funner to listen to.
Okay, good.
So, she's gonna be a lot more entertaining than I am. Starting off, something we started new this year is the student of the week. And this is an opportunity for every student in our building to kind of have the spotlight shine on them. Once a week, we will, we alternate. One week it'll be second grade, the next week it'll be third grade. And here I have some pictures of some third graders on the left and some second graders on the right. Harper, do you want to kind of talk about what's in the middle? I guess she's going to take her. Awesome. Go ahead. Tell them about the bulletin board. What did we put on that bulletin board?
Pictures, pictures of the people who got students of the week and what their favorite things are and what they want to be when they grow up.
They take them, I, I sent her a congratulations note that they got to be, they get to be the student of the week next week and they get this, this kind of looks like a newspaper article and they get to fill it out. They could either draw a picture, which you see a couple chose to draw a picture, or they can paste a picture on there themselves. And we post it on the bulletin board right when you walk in and they get to be there for a week. And then, we also take their picture and we put them on the webpage and so that we can kind of celebrate all of our students. And everyone gets an opportunity to do this. They don't have to, you know, do something to be here. They're a student at Longfellow, so we want to celebrate them just being a student at Longfellow. So, everyone's going to have an opportunity throughout the year to be a student of the week. Next slide. Another thing that we do at Longfellow is manners table. And this is something Mr. Shaver started years ago and I've continued where we, the students get to pick every other, or they don't get to pick, excuse me, the teachers pick students who are really using their manners throughout the building and really doing things that they need to be doing. And so, I then set up a table and I have a tablecloth, chargers, cloth taper, cloth napkins. I really try to make it something special. And they get to eat with me and we do this every other Thursday. And I don't, Harper, Harper has done this with me. I don't know if that's a picture of her up there. And these students, I will go in line. We get to go to the front of the line. I will take their plate. I'm their little server for that day. And we, we get our plates, we sit down, they get to have a pop and we talk about our day. You know, we'll talk about whatever activities are coming up. We talked about the snow. They played in the snow last week and how many people made snowmen and, and just kind of talk about our day and have fun and kind of get on that level within that, we're all humans, you know, and we all like the same things. And I want to enjoy them and I hope they enjoy me as well as their principal. And then they get to have sundaes afterwards. Do you remember what kind of toppings you get to pick, Harper?
What?
Do you remember what kind of toppings you get to put on your ice cream?
Chocolate and strawberry.
And caramel. And then the big, the most important question they always ask, "Can we put all three?"
No, we can't.
Absolutely. If you're going to eat it, you absolutely can. And so, I try to take pictures and we also post these on the webpage. Next slide. I know you've talked a bit about this with the other presenters throughout the last couple of months. PBIS is our positive behavioral interventions and supports. We are reinforcing positive behavior throughout the building. And we are doing this at Washington through the middle school right now. The first thing we did is we developed a school matrix that talked about the VUD standard. And I'll let Harper explain that here in the next slide. Our matrix consisted of restroom, bathroom, or excuse me, restroom, classroom, hallway, playground, bus, cafeteria assemblies, circle drive. These are kind of the areas that we saw that we need, we need to tidy up a little bit and we needed to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to be doing when we are in these areas. We had three different assemblies to introduce our PBIS in small chunks. Second and third graders, if we throw it all at them at one time, it's not going to stick. So, we broke them down into three chunks and we had an assembly on a Monday morning and then the next week, we had it on the next Monday morning. I believe one was a Tuesday because I think we had Martin Luther King Day in there. And the students all came into, in the first thing in the morning and we met and I put together a power slide and we talked about what our VUD standard was. And we also did a few teasers and had a lot, what did we post all over the building before we told you what we were doing?
Gotchas.
Big signs that said?
Gotcha.
Gotcha. And we didn't tell you what it meant, did we? We tried to build it up a little bit. And the teachers also did a, I should have showed you the video. That would have been very entertaining. We also put together a video demonstrating what are the behaviors we want in the different areas to look like. Next slide, please. Harper, would you like to explain what the VUD standard is?
Do you expect? Be respectful, use kind words and actions, give your best effort and show responsibility.
Perfect. And then, so in each bathroom, what does that look like? And we broke down, you know, what does be respectful look like? What does use kind words and actions look like in a bathroom? We broke it down in the assembly for them. And then currently, this is what our gotcha looks like. It's front and back. However, we are, we are changing it. Once we run out of these gotchas, we have decided to align the process. And I know in Washington and at Lincoln, they're currently already using the triplicate form. And so, ours will go into a triplicate form as soon as these are, you heard it here first time, Harper. Have him share that with you. As soon as we run out of these, she's got the news. She could tell everyone, there'll be a triplicate form. And that way, it'll be the same process from building to building so they already know what to expect. Go ahead and walk to next. So, when you get a gotcha, tell them what you do with it, Harper. When you get a gotcha, what do you do with it?
You put it in one of the buckets and you, if you get picked, you get to do what it says on the bucket.
So, they get, they get a choice. We have a daily drawing. They take their gotcha and we punch it currently. Once we have the triplicates, that'll take, we won't have to punch it anymore. We'll just put one of the forms in there. But currently, we punch it, they write their name on a ticket, their ticket goes in one of the buckets, they get a pick. And then each, each day at the end of the day, we draw for the next day. We have morning announcements where the students get to read the morning announcements to, and do the pledges over our intercom system. That's a pretty popular one. Lunch from VIP, which you can imagine is probably very popular, where they get to sit at a special table and they get to pick a friend to sit with. They usually sit with their classmates and who's just in their class and so they could pick anyone in the entire grade to sit with them. And then a pencil pouch. When Brown's was going out of business, they donated us a bunch of pencil pouches and we put pencils and candy in there. And so, they get to pick which drawing they want to go to. They may get picked, they may not get picked, but the process is there and they're doing, hopefully, everything for the right reasons. Okay, next one. Then we also have some weekly drawings. One up here is two, my students got to go on a ride along with Officer Clack last week and we got to go to the, Prisa wants to comment that's we didn't go to the prison. We went to the police department. Sorry, my brain wasn't thinking that. I was like, we did not go to the prison. We went to the police department and they got to tour the police department. And he was going to let them see, I guess, the old jail that is no longer, but we couldn't see it that day for some reason. So, one of the other options is to have a Mexican date with Mrs. Tucker. And that's in every other week that we do. And we're also rotating ride along with the police officer with, ride along with the fire department in Washington and Lincoln is, they're doing that as well. Well, I believe that was Mrs. Williams' idea. It was a great idea, so.
It was really Dr. Brooks' idea.
Oh, well, there you go. Well, we all, we all took, took board of that one. And then this is another fun one, is dress your teacher. And we do that every, Mr. Chapman, bless his heart, out of the three times, he's been picked twice. He was Wonder Woman that day. And so, we do the dress your teacher on the same Fridays that we do Friday Finale. So, everyone in the building gets to see that. So, and I've had, I've had the pleasure of being picked for a dress your teacher as well. So, I don't know why there wasn't a picture of me available, but, but it's been a lot of fun. And then now I have Ms. Harper here also to talk about Literacy Fair. We just got done doing our second grade literacy fair. We did a third grade literacy fair during the first parent teacher conferences in the fall. And then second grade got to participate for this parent teacher conferences. And here's a picture of several of the projects students did. And Harper, as you can see, kind of knocked it out of the park with her literacy fair project and I'm going to let her talk about it a little bit.
I did a Harry Potter Lego because I have read two of the books and this is Harry Potter and the Chamber of Secrets. Here's the Quidditch match and it has some of the players in it and they are about to do the Quidditch match. Here's the castle. It has the womping willow when they get, Harry man's wrong, get stuck in the car when it's stuck in the tree and there are people in the castle and the, there are some things that I have in it. And a lot of the pieces I have are, the, a lot of them are figures and some of them are like, they're standing out or they're sitting somewhere.
You can tell she worked very hard on that. You can see the detail, it's quite impressive. Harper, how long do you think that took you to do?
Probably a week and a half. Those are hours.
Like a month. No, not a month.
She did a great job.
That's fabulous.
Something else we're put before I go on to state assessments is another thing that we are doing, and this is district wide, this is all five of our buildings, is a positive note card. And this just gives any staff member in our building the opportunity to share something positive, great works from our students with parents. And so, we're all going to do this and Mrs. Williams designed them, they look great. And so, we're excited that we are going to, just one more opportunity to share what's going on in our schools and to celebrate our students because they are, we have great students. We have the best students here. And we want to celebrate them and we really want to pat them on the back when they're doing things well. On state assessments, yes, third grade students will be taking two sections of the OSTP. We take the ELA, we take the math. They don't take science until they hit fifth grade. Third grade will be the only grade taking a pencil and paper test this year. So, luckily, we don't have to make that big change that they have to make with Mrs. Williams and all that. We will still have the pencil paper, so that'll have a little bit of familiarity. But you know, I really like to think about it, with the math test, it might be not that big of a jump because they're used to taking tests now on, on the computer anymore. And third grade teachers are using their student enrichment time to review and to develop a deeper understanding of each standard. I know my third grade teachers came, I believe, in October and spoke a little bit about their enrichment group. And one of my teachers was going to come today, but unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it. Just real quickly and I won't take a lot of time because I know this has been a longer meeting. When they first presented, they were meeting 25 minutes in their enrichment groups and going deeper and at level of where the kids are. And we divide those groups based on the math score. In December, when we took our second math score, they reshuffled the groups so that they, the kids, some kids moved up, maybe a few moved down, but not very many. Most of them are moving up, which is the goal. And so, what they're doing is, is we added 25 more minutes. We rearranged a little bit in our schedule to be able to give them that time so that they can go a little bit deeper in their standards to really prepare their students. Just a quick example of kind of what maybe it looks like, not what maybe, what it does look like. Today, they talked about inferencing. And so, in all the, there's five groups. And all the groups, they did the sheet together. So, they all had something that looked familiar. And then each group then took inferencing where they were at. So, the lowest group took inferencing very simply. This one discussed, they were supposed to find out or decide whether it's daytime or nighttime. And they read together, the school bell rang, students walked out the door with their backpacks on and homework. So, then they cut them out and they put it on daytime or nighttime. So, we could take it basic all the way to going up to, like our top group who took comic strips and broke them down scene by scene. She put this up on the preeminent. Scene by scene with Garfield, you know, he's always got some great expressions. And they were trying, and there was questions for each scene, you know, look at Garfield's face, you know, what do you think his facial expression is saying? And then they go to the next frame. And so, we're taken at where they're at and the writing is going deeper and then they'll go back to their classrooms with the rest of their classmates where they come back together and then they have discussions. And then the students are speaking about what they want to spend money on each other. So, I've seen several of their observations during this time and they're doing really great things and they're really expanding and hitting kids where they're at and allowing those kids who are ready to take off, they're going to let them go and keep pushing them. And the kids down here, we're going to meet them where they're at and keep pushing them to get in that next group. Hopefully, we won't have a group one the next time we do a math test. And that's all I have. Is there any questions?
Very nice.
Can I say something positive? I heard a wonderful comment about your building the other day. One of our teachers had to be over at Longfellow and they said it was really neat. They had to stand outside each door and wait for, the wait for a second and they heard the exact same lesson being taught at the exact same time and everything, but in different ways to meet their kids. So, it was, they were like, it was the most amazing thing to see.
Thanks for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ladies of current business, where we are? 7.1, Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Improve and Offer Employment on a One-Year Temporary Contract to Advocate Number One Certified Teacher for the 2019-2020 School Year.
Ms. Potter. I am pleased to bring Adam Stewart to the board tonight to be approved to be our new band director. He comes to us via Hennessy for five or six years there and then he's been at Cimarron the last few years, a couple of years maybe?
Three, four years.
Okay. And he, everybody that I have talked to since we interviewed him and different things said his bands come with, they're full of energy, great sound. He's got field marching experience. We're real excited about the places that he can take our band and do those things. And I know Kara and Nick have been real excited about him coming and doing that and we are, we are really excited that he's coming on board with us to do that. So, I would very much like to recommend Adam to be our next band director at Iowa High School and Iowa Middle School.
I might say too, I want to thank Kara for stepping in and stepping up for us. We can't thank you enough for what you've done for the band at the middle school and high school and we really appreciate it. And we're happy that Adam is here and we can provide some relief for him.
Thank you.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you, Kara and Nick. Thank you all.
You may leave. Thank you.
Thank you, very excited.
We're excited to have you, Adam. Thank you.
So, what, Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Improve Iowa State Travel for the Iowa FFA to attend the Last Offensive Contest in Hutchinson, Kansas on April 17th of 2019. The FFA has attended this contest over the last few years.
So, I would make this recommendation.
How much motion that we approve the FFA going to Hutchinson, Kansas?
Second. Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Yes.
7.3, Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Improve Renewal of Contracts for the Following Principals for Fiscal Year 20. Mr. Les Potter, Iowa High School. Stephanie Martini, Iowa Middle School. Mrs. Madison Williams, Lincoln Elementary. Mrs. Allison Tucker, Longfellow Elementary. And Mr. Shane Bealy, Washington Elementary.
I want to thank the principals. They have helped me. First-year superintendent, it's been new and there's been change involved in all of that. We've started strategic planning. You can see a new report card. We have some challenges and some things that we all recognize we've got to get better at and we've set some goals to achieve those. And at this time, I would recommend that we renew the following principles as listed for FY '20.
So, move.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Hanson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
A proposed executive session to discuss evaluation of employment of Tim Arco, Superintendent of the District.
We got one, we got 7.4, Jane.
7.4.
Extra duty. It's not, I left it off.
Seven point four, Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Improve the Revised Extra Duty Assignments for the Year 2018.
Okay, and so, this is, this is with our girls golf and boys golf. And if you'll notice on the attachment, we are going to have enough girls for our golf team and at one time, we did not think we would. So, Mindy White is going to be our girls golf coach and that is the corresponding type. And I believe it was 12 years golf experience she had when she was out. So, I would recommend that we approve this revised extra duty assignment schedule for 2018 to 2019.
I would make motion that we accept this revised extra duty contract for golf. Second.
Maybe second.
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 Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Arco. Don't have too much, too much paper change here.
I know.
All right, now we are. Number eight, Discussion, Proposed Executive Session to Discuss Evaluation Employment of Tim Arco, Superintendent for 25 Oklahoma State Section 307B1. Evaluation topic, Student Services, which includes School Environment Systems of Support, Student Engagement, Relationships, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and will be ready. No. I guess that's all. Yep. And relationships. Yep. Make motion we go to the executive session.
Second.
Thank you for that.
Kane?
Yes.
Hey, darn that thing. Carter?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.